Welcome everyone to the June Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education meeting. We hope that Dr. May will get here soon, but we're going to go ahead and get started because Mr. Hutchins has a bottle school, so we're on this.
Yeah.
And maybe you'll learn something. You just go for the cookies, don't you?
Yeah.
I thought so.
And Kool-Aid.
And Kool-Aid, sorry. Everybody would please stand and Dr. Gardenour will lead us in pledge of flag, moment of silence.
Start our heads for moment of silence. Thank you.
Attention, salute, pledge. Our pledge of allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have a special guest, Mr. Mills and Mr. Polly and Garrett coming to talk to him about a momentous achievement in his life and something that's a product of what we've done here in the school system and just an excellence on his part. So I'll let Mr. Mills come up and introduce Garrett and we'll recognize him for being a solo pilot.
Well, this is a privilege to be here again, and I was just thinking driving here, this is kind of a teamwork. There's a lot of people that have been involved in this. The school board was involved several years ago when they approved the acquisition of our FMX simulator. And again, because of your decision, I guess none of you guys, but your previous.
Hey, I was here. I've been here forever.
But we were the first high school in the country to get an FMX simulator, and because of that, it has helped Garrett's solo with Lieutenant Colonel Polly and his Flight Foundation came alongside. And I was just thinking, looking at the numbers, that Garrett sold about 20%. It only cost him about 20% of what it would have cost him if he's out there by himself. And that's a result of the time in the simulator got him ready for the airplane, and then Lieutenant Colonel Polly's Flight Foundation came along and picked up half of the actual costs, and Garrett and his family paid the other. So for $400, he sold. That's amazing. And if you go out to airports, it's about $2,250 if you do it on your own. So Garrett's another one of our outstanding Elizabethan high school students, just graduated this year, and I'm going to ask him if he'd just share briefly what he's planning on doing.
In the fall, I plan on attending Middle Tennessee State University for their aerospace and aviation program to pursue dual majoring in professional pilot and unmanned aircraft. And I've already applied for the airport down there. Hopefully, I'll be working at the airport while I go through my schooling down there.
Garrett works at the airport here in Elizabethan, so he was out working today. I was out flying, and he was there and he had his cutoffs and his airport shirt on. I said, well, bring that, you know. I think mom has said, no, we're going to have some nicer clothes for picture maybe. So again, thank you, school board, for what you've done for our students. And Lieutenant Colonel Polly, thank you again for everything you've done and our support. And we've got a couple of certificates here. Lieutenant, if you want to present this from the Flight Foundation, and then I've got one here from the school, and look, Garrett.
Just let me say, I don't want to run this thing long, but school board is very important in this program. Twenty-four years ago, when I started teaching ROTC at Unicloy County High School, I proposed this flying program as a way to get the program off probation, and the school board voted four to three to have us have a flying program as part of our ROTC program. That's a heck of a vote. So thank you for continuing that here, but 23 years later, that's a Hall of Fame program. One vote makes a difference. Saying yes, as opposed to no, which is easier, makes a difference. So I'm really proud to be here, and it's always fun to have a student solo or get a private pilot that wants to go on to MTSU and be a professional pilot. So Garrett, this is our certificate, and what are you, a third solo student for Dan Mills? He has started doing orientation flights and solos out here at Elizabethan, which kind of helps expand the program. There's only so much I can do, and Dan's been a great, great asset to this and has gone his whole life. Anyway, successfully completed a solo flight on 20th May at 20:00 hours, 8:00 p.m. A little late, huh? And a Cessna 172. And in recognition of that milestone, this is your Flight Foundation solo certificate. Congrats.
And this here is from the Elizabethan school system here, first solo flight certificate who completed Elizabethan on the 4/20/2015, Cessna 172. So again, congratulations, Garrett. Thank you.
Time for citizens to speak in accordance to Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I need to recuse myself from voting on the consent.
Okay. I believe it's over on the agenda changes. We have a transfer that involves Mr. Isaac's wife, so we will recuse himself from that particular vote. Also wanted to know if anyone would have any objection if we lumped together in our regular agenda 15 through 21. These are all bid renewals, and if you don't mind, we'll take those in one rather than go through each one individually.
Food service.
Yes. Everybody okay with that?
Sounds fine.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments on the consent and regular agenda? All right. All those out on the floor is to approve the consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Dr. Gardenour?
Okay. One, a few items of interest.
And we're to sit back and get coffee?
Yeah. This evening, our personnel list is going to be a long one, so I'll save the best for last. But I wanted to say a few kind words about our people in the community and their support of their children in the school system. We've had a really excellent experience doing fundraising for the stadium and the bandroom, and people just keep stepping out wanting to be a part of that project, so we appreciate all their help and support. On the stadium, I sent you all an update today on where we are. We are on schedule. We're slowly moving toward the date. We're about 73 days from opening kickoff, and we feel very comfortable, weather permitting, that we will be on schedule and cannot wait very soon. You'll see the sign for the stadium is going to go up. You're going to be seeing a lot of the fencing that we've been waiting on to protect the field a little bit. The home grandstands will be finished very soon, and we'll be starting on the visitor grandstands. And the roofs on the buildings is another area where we're looking to see that come together very soon. So almost all the concrete is done at this point. We have some in the concourse, and we're looking forward to our donor brick being placed in front of the donor wall. So there's a lot of great things going on with the project. Switching to the music room project, we do have bids coming in on the 17th next week, and we're having that bid opening at GRC in Kingsport. And then we will go through a period of time, and then we'll talk about some other things I think Ms. Brewer will talk about later. We are doing some, the community I know is excited about what's going to happen during the opening of the stadium, and it's going to be a two-day fanfare of the past and the present and the future, what we're going to be doing. But there's going to be a lot of planning that's involved in that. And so Mr. Wright and Coach Wilson, Mr. Van Hussen and I are starting the planning process, and probably before it's all over with, maybe we'll have a little board workshop and talk about that and see if there's anything that all of you would like to have us include or do during that time.
And.
I was really impressed with the picture, the aerial photo in the paper. I'd love to have, I mean, as it progress, as we're getting ready, I'd like to have one of those, the finished product, and even use that as a possible fundraiser. I mean, I think that's a beautiful idea. It's such a, I mean, it really captures the project so well.
It does, and we have a student that's really interested in that.
Great.
And so I'll be contacting him this week. He's been down there about every day, and we'll be talking with him here very soon. He's using that as a project for him personally. So Mr. Van Hussen and I are going to give him a tour next week and work with him on some of that.
Right.
So that'll be kind of neat. And that's it for that part. Other than the fact also, I want to say that the field has been signed off on, it's completely finished, and they have gone. So that's one positive step, and it's completely utterly finished. So that's kind of nice to have that stamp of approval and that on there. Okay, personnel update. New hire, Michael S. Ward, System Wide Electrician, HVAC Technician, Effective 6/115. Lindsay Keiker, TA Digger Math Teacher, Effective 8/315. Kendra Klein, TA Digger Math and Social Studies Teacher, Effective 8/315. Tanya Smith, TA Digger Language Arts Teacher, Effective 8/315. Lauren Dean, TA Digger Language Arts Teacher, Effective 8/315. Todd Whittamore, EHS Social Studies Teacher, Effective 8/315. Todd Whittamore, EHS Assistant Girls Basketball Coach, Effective 6/1515. Jessica Glover, Eastside Teacher, Effective 8/315. Julie Hartsick, Westside Teacher, Effective 8/315. Kimberly Henard, Interim Eastside Teacher, Effective 8/315. Corey McPherson, TA Digger Physical Education Teacher, Effective 8/315. Barbara Rangel. Harold McCormick, Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. William Duncan, TA Digger Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. Rachel Donaldson, Eastside Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. Brooke Manor Rayfield, Eastside Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. Kimberly Blackwell, TA Digger Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. Benjamin Carlson, EHS Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. Resignation, Vicki Manuel, Harold McCormick, Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/52815. Jennifer Snoggrass, TA Digger Head Cheer Coach, Effective 6/115. Johnny Burleson, EHS Registrar, Effective 6/1415. Lea Vabson, Darren Brewer, ECS Technology Assistant from 5/1115 to 5/2215. Amber Ebarb, Eastside Teacher, from 8/315 to 10/215. Transfers, Jean Kleiner, from Full-Time Assistant Teacher at the ELC to Part-Time Assistant Teacher at the ELC, Effective 5/2215. Loretta Julian, for Full-Time Assistant Teacher at the ELC to a Part-Time Assistant Teacher at the ELC, Effective 5/2215. Tammy Matheson, from Full-Time Assistant Teacher at Harold McCormick to Part-Time Assistant Teacher at Harold McCormick, Effective 5/2215. Melanie Staff, from ESP Site Coordinator at TA Digger to ESP Childcare Worker, Effective 5/2215. Joshua Boatman, from EHS Assistant Principal/Discipline to EHS Assistant Principal, Effective 7/2015. Susan Street, from TA Digger Assistant Teacher to TA Digger Secondary Secretary, Effective 7/2015. Pendola Maeve, from Eastside, Interim Assistant Principal to System Wide Elementary Assistant Principal, Effective 7/2715. Tammy Fowler, from EHS Custodian to Westside Custodian, Effective 7/2715. Barbara Willis, from ESP Childcare Worker to ESP Site Coordinator or TA Digger, Effective 7/2715. Amber Abel, Transfer from EHS CT Teacher to EHS Math Teacher, Effective 8/315. Alisa Carvajo, from Harold McCormick Teacher to EHS Teacher, Effective 8/315. Judy Fletcher, from Assistant to the Elementary Principals to Westside Media Specialist, Effective 8/315. Katherine Hartman, from Eastside Teacher to Harold McCormick Teacher, Effective 8/315. Anna Hurley, from System Wide Reading Coach to 912 Academic Coach, Effective 8/315. John Oakley, from TA Digger Language Teacher to TA Digger ISS Teacher, Effective 8/315. Candace Pataia, TA Digger Teacher to Eastside Teacher, Effective 8/315. Elizabeth Post, from EHS Assistant Principal to 68 Academic Coach, Effective 8/315. Marsha Taylor, from System Wide Mathematics Coach to K5 Academic Coach, Effective 8/315. Edward Morrell, from Harold McCormick Assistant to Teacher to TA Digger Assistant to the Teacher, Effective 8/515. Kathy Sanders, from TA Digger Assistant Teacher to EHS Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/515. April Touluskey, from LPN at TA Digger to LPN at EHS, Effective 8/515. Richard Wagner, from ELC Assistant to Teacher to ELC Assistant to the Teacher/Bus Driver, Effective 8/515. Barry Edney, from Eastside Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher to ELC Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, Effective 8/515. Nicole Moore, from Eastside, Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher to ELC Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, Effective 8/515. Non-rehire, Sherri West, EHS Custodian, Effective 5/2515. Tabitha Luton, TA Digger Teacher, Effective 5/2515. Irene Bachaller, Teacher, Effective TA Digger Teacher, Effective 5/2515. Corey McPherson, Part-Time TA Digger Teacher, Effective 5/2515. And on to the next page.
Could you repeat that?
I'm trying to do it as fast as I can.
I feel like I just need to, like.
I'm smoking over here, okay? Okay, the next part will be new hires. Myra Newman, Director of Special Education Curriculum and RTI, Effective 6/2915. Jessica Costner, TA Digger Teacher, Effective 8/315. Sidney Forbes, Harold McCormick Teacher, Effective 8/315. Lea Vabson, Dr. Josh Landell, Principal of Eastside, from 7/20 to 4/2916. Transfers, Travis Hurley, from TA Digger Teacher to EHS, sorry, Eastside Interim Principal, Effective 7/2015. Regina Isaacs, from TA Digger Cook to EHS Cafeteria Manager, Effective 7/2015. Ken Meredith, Eastside Lunchroom Monitor/Cook, to Eastside Interim Part-Time Assistant Teacher, Effective 8/315. And resignation, Travis Hurley, EHS Assistant Football Coach, Effective 6/315. Thank you very much.
How you feeling?
I'm in a fog.
Well, we'll talk about something else for a minute. Time for board reports. Anybody want to talk about how we all spent Monday? And I want to talk about our workshop.
Oh, why don't you do that? Why don't you do that?
Oh, well, you guys are more than welcome.
Let's play rock, scissors, paper.
Yeah, really, that was the standing joke. One of my favorite things is that for the first time in a long time, the entire board made it to a workshop together. That was a, that has not happened in a very long time. You guys want to say anything about it, and then I'll chime in?
Well, as I sent you all an email, it made me feel good about ourselves as far as some of the, I've heard other school systems that have gone, are going through the process in hiring superintendents, and some of their frustrations, it made me feel really good about how we did things and how we managed to get through the process. I thought it was an informative workshop.
I thought you went for the cookies.
And the cookies were great, yeah.
Yeah, I told you, the cookies are worth coming back for.
I enjoyed it. I've been to three of these now, and this one was very informative and well-presented, and one of our old colleagues, Dale Lynch, was there as one of the presenters. It was good to visit with Dale. And he's doing well, and it seems like he's really enjoying what he does. It was a good night.
I have been to that workshop several times. That particular one, I think this was maybe the second or third time I've been to it. And this was the first time they had a superintendent and Randall Bennett co-lead it, and it was really, really good. And I like to pick on Dale all the time, and so to say something nice about him, you know, kind of hurts me, but it was good. Now, see, Dr. May, Dr. Gardenour read off an exhaustive list to give you time to get here, so he'll be happy to repeat it for you.
Have we ever considered the, any of the board recognitions? But, you know, we got the brochure to run into the meeting.
As far as.
Okay, just kidding.
We'd like to talk about that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, later on, so as a possible workshop, so. Want to talk about Monday before we move on? Want to talk about Monday before we move on?
No, you did it.
Anybody else want to talk about anything?
It was excellent.
Yeah, there we go.
I learned how to better relate to you. I think we already have a great start on that. That has been tremendous.
Well, we just learned that we've done it, we did it right, so.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I was going to have to get tossed off the board, so. We have decided we're taking items 15 through 21 and lumping those together.
Okay.
So, there we go. All right, shall we move on to the regular agenda? So first item is approve 2016-2016 kindergarten summary report. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody having questions or comments about that? Somebody want to talk?
I just assume this is a, this is, we do it on a regular basis, a yearly basis, or is this something that's, I mean, it's a great report. I mean, it.
It's on a as needed basis, but what we have, our teachers do, is when we have changes in report cards or reporting, we always bring that before the board. So if there are any questions on that. Typically, we'll not have a lot of questions from parents on it, but we feel like this is a more comprehensive report and it really hits the skill areas where, and the teachers have worked together to develop it, so they feel that it's a better picture of what that student can do. And it also ties into some of the pre-testing that we do in the school system when students come to us.
I know there's electronic format of this and I didn't know if we're ever considering going that direction. I don't even remember the company, but I know we looked into it before.
Yeah, there are, there are opportunities to do that and do an inventory. Just cost has been.
Well, I think it's great to have the skill sets and when they're going to achieve them and exactly what a parent can see, okay, this is where we're going.
It kind of mirrors the virgins.
I don't know what we had exactly. I don't know what we had before, but I think it's great.
I assume that kindergarten teachers are on board with this as well?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
They work together to come up with what they felt that we needed to change it to, so.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is approve the 2015-2016 kindergarten summary report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve contract between Kim Hall and Elizabethan City Schools from June 2, 2015 through June 1, 2018. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
This is just a re-up for Ms. Hall. She's been working for us for a number of years. She is excellent what she does. She's a school system diagnostician that we hire on a per-evaluation basis. And so she's done a really, a really good job for us over the years, so I'd ask that we approve it for her. Is she independent? She is.
Any questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve contract between Kim Hall and Elizabethan City Schools from June 2, 2015 through June 1, 2018. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve contract with RNA Solutions Incorporated, Randa Solutions, and Elizabethan City Schools from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, at an annual estimated cost of $5,129. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Randa is our provider that helps us do the team evaluation model. Mr. Hutchins and I talked with them this week about just making sure that there are going to be some changes coming in the state as far as the way they're reporting. And they've assured us that there will be no problem making sure that they change with what the state's doing. And it allows our administrators to take an iPad in and do everything on an iPad when they're evaluating teachers, which is a great savings on paperwork and time for everyone. And then it directly goes back and takes the reports and takes those on to the State Department. And we have had a seamless, over time, a seamless integration and upload to the State Department. We have not had any problems since we've been with them. Not any caused by Randa, we'll say that. So, anyway, so I asked you to approve that. And this is half price because we, Mr. Hutchins signed on for the pilot. It's half price of what they normally charge.
That's what I was saying, that price is great. I didn't know how you're getting that. It's such a bargain.
They, it's a lot of hard work on Mr. Hutchins' part. So he was with them every day when, during the development process. They've kind of taken care of us over the years.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve contract with RNA Solutions Incorporated, Randa Solutions, and Elizabethan City Schools from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, at an annual estimated cost of $5,129. All those, yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is to approve the 2015-2016 differentiated pay plan. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The differentiated pay plan is unchanged from last year. We have to submit the pay plan by June 30th with board approval. Keep in mind, though, after we do that, the board can choose at any time to, if we want to reevaluate that or look at different options, we can, as a board, you can set salary schedules and different things like that. So we're not necessarily locked in exactly to what this is, but it is, does have to be the state. So we have consistently tried to pay our grandfathered people that, when we start differentiating pay, they're grandfathered in for education experience. And we're also trying to pay people to lead us curriculum-wise in our PLCs. And so that's where our focus has been on that.
Any questions or comments?
When do we set this, the salary schedule?
The salary schedule, normally we set that along with the budget. So when we pass the budget, that's when we have it. When we have board workshops leading up to that, we'll do that prior to the budget being set.
And then, refresh my memory, I know 2% was figured about it around, what did we end up at base?
We're at least at 2%.
So we are, we did make 2%?
We did, we did make 2%. We had a very positive number come out on our BEP estimate. It was quite a bit more than what we were thinking it was going to be. And so we were able to give a full 2% raise to everyone. So we're very happy with that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, item on the floor, approve 2015-2016 differentiated pay plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve FY16 consolidated application approval for IDEA/ESEA. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is just the, we bring this to the board every year. This will mirror exactly what is in our school system budget, maybe a dollar off or two, where the State Department and Mr. Hutchins knows, they'll change it about $3 and we have to go through an amendment process. But it's very close to our estimates that we put into that. And the State Department moves a little bit of money around, but most of our money is spent on personnel, a little bit on technology and those types of things, but most of it is personnel to take care of these children.
I just, Ms. Perkins, I know you sent this out in an email originally. I didn't receive a copy of it yet, because I don't know. John told me about it and I looked it up, but, no, 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 John. No, but I was just letting you know, I didn't know if there was a glitch and it could have been in my computer or something. No.
A little light reading.
Who asked Dr. Gardenour to read?
Read the whole thing, too. Well, I have a blanket, so I'm good to go.
I'm warmed up.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve FY16 consolidated application approval for IDEA/ESEA. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve the award of bid number ECSS FY2014-2015-06 for two walk-in coolers for Elizabethan High School Athletic Complex to TriMark Strategic in the amount of $28,864. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this, these are basically going to be used for the new athletic complex and this was the low bidder on it. And these, these will really help the band. I think they're probably more excited about the coolers than anything else, just because of them having to ice drinks down. But we will be paying for this out of donations that we have received. And I can't name one of the donors, the major donor on this, but the other will be from brick sales. So we think that there will be between $3,000 and $1,000 that will come from brick sales and the other will be coming from a donor. But we will make it public prior to the opening of the stadium.
And these are located at the ends of each of the concession stands? Is that where they are?
If you look at the end of the concession stand, there's a wall that extends and there's a large concrete pad on either end.
So out, exterior, that's the only thing I thought, where are they going to put a cooler? So it is on the, on the pad, then, not inside?
It'll be on the pad and it'll have a door that opens inside that they can service and get cold drinks and put them into the drink machines that will be furnished by Pepsi in there.
No wonder they're excited about that.
Well.
It's going to be nice.
We have to start four days icing drinks down ahead of the game. That's pretty tough. So they're happy about that.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is approve the award of bid number ECSS FY2014-2015-06 for two walk-in coolers for Elizabethan High School Athletic Complex to TriMark Strategic in the amount of $28,864. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, approve the recommended lunch price increase for the 2015-2016 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This is just raising the prices in accordance with what we need to, the recommended from USDA. And also, we did raise the employee lunch just a little bit, but they, they try to take care of employees with maybe an extra scoop of food, too. So, anyway.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right. Item on the floor, approve the recommended lunch price increase for the 2015-2016 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, approve the community eligibility program at Eastside Elementary, Harold McCormick Elementary, Westside Elementary, and the Early Learning Center for the 2015-2016 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, have a second?
Are you not taking all these at one time?
No, not till we get.
Oh, I thought it was 15.
No, I'm sorry.
I marked my sheet wrong, sorry.
Okay. Can I get a second on that one?
Second.
Thank you.
And this is, this is, it provides a universal breakfast and lunch for our children. And it's been a pretty successful program. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And we're going to be doing some data analysis this year to see whether we could add TA Duggar to that program also. It just is going to really depend on how many students eat and, you know, and that type of thing. But it has been great for our students overall.
Do we have a paid breakfast program as well?
For, for the junior high and high school, we do.
Right.
Yes, but as far as what you're approving here, it's.
Just the three elementarys?
Yeah, at this point.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, they, what are the prices right now for a paid breakfast? Do you remember, Ms. Williams? Yeah.
Wow.
This allows us to offer it free and so it's, it makes a big, big difference, so.
You just have to get there in time, right?
You have to get there in time.
Anybody else have a question or a comment? Okay, item on the floor, approve the community eligibility program at Eastside Elementary, Harold McCormick Elementary, Westside Elementary, and the Early Learning Center for the 2015-2016 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, we're going to do the next ones all in a row. So I'll read quickly. Approve renewal of bid 2015-201501S in the purchase of bread and bakery products from Flowers Bakery Company for the bid period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. Approve renewal of bid 2014-2015-02S in the purchase of milk and ice cream products from Mayfield Dairy for the bid period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. Approve renewal of bid 2014-2015-03S in the purchase of food products from Cisco Knoxville for the bid period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. Approve renewal of bid 2014-2015-04S in the purchase of miscellaneous cafeteria supplies from Cisco Knoxville for the bid period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. Approve renewal of bid 2014-2015-04S in the purchase of miscellaneous cafeteria supplies from Summers Hardware for the bid period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016. I think you just put stuff in there to make me have to read this. Approve renewal of bid 2014-2015-05S in the purchase of fresh produce from Reinhardt's Food Service for the bid period July 1, 2015 through July 30, 2016. And approve the program slash participation agreement, the free and reduced price policy statement, the certification of compliance, and civil rights policy for the 2015-2016 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on any of this?
There's so many.
You about to get that lady out there, come up there and smack you around.
How many ounces are in the bread?
Children get free lunch at the elementary schools, right?
They do.
So the school district still has to pay for all of this? I'm confused. I mean, if the kids get, do you get reimbursed for the free lunch, just if the kids get? Okay, there was a piece missing I couldn't quite figure out. Thank you. Anybody else?
Item on the floor is, as previously read, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, motion carries. Last item, approve resolution regarding the previously considered memorandum of understanding between Elizabethan City Schools and EMD Anywhere LLC denoting that further negotiations will not continue as a final memorandum of understanding could not be mutually agreed upon. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you.
This has been, we've been working on this for several months. We, we just really could not come to an agreement about second, second-party and third-party employment and are really requiring our people to comply with HIPAA. And it just became, it would be cost prohibitive and it would also be putting them in a pretty bad situation. And I, we're looking at other avenues. I met with the Health Department today and we are looking at other avenues to move forward with some possible healthcare options, but at this point, we just felt that this is probably not the way for us to go for our, for our employees.
Well, I appreciate all the time that you have spent working on this. I know that you've tried to, you know.
We have.
I appreciate it.
Do we have any expenses so far into it that are tangible, like equipment or anything?
We have, we have incurred no expense because we felt that before we had anything come into the school system, that we would have to have a memorandum of understanding. Basically, it's, in all intents and purposes, it's a contract. And so there's been nothing delivered and we thought that's a better action to take, so.
And our attorney was comfortable with?
We have been working.
And that was a lot of hours of going into it.
It's been a lot of hours in working with their attorney, Mr. Shoemaker. And we've had conference calls and spent quite a bit of time trying to hammer out the issues, but it just really came down to a few very small things that have big implications. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Item on the floor, approve resolution regarding the previously considered memorandum of understanding between Elizabethan City Schools and EMD Anywhere LLC denoting that further negotiations will not continue as a final memorandum of understanding could not be mutually agreed upon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Couple of things to put on your radar before we leave tonight. There is an ethics webinar that's going to be offered June 19th. If you would like to be here to participate, please let Ms. Perkins know. Those are always really nice. Those are always really nice, they don't take very long, but we usually meet and kind of go over that together, so if you would like to do that, you know the time, Ms. Perkins?
Eleven.
Eleven? Noon hour time, okay? So please, if you want to do that, let her know.
What was the date?
June nineteenth.
June night.
Noon hour time. Some things I would like for us to consider, I would like for us to maybe look at having a policy workshop. Summer's kind of a quieter time, and there's some housekeeping items that we could work on, if there's some policies you would like to look at, so maybe we could do a policy workshop. We would like to maybe consider after the workshop with TSBA about having a very short, we'll do baby steps, maybe a two-hour board retreat, one weekend, meet for lunch, and then have some time to talk about some different things. I know that Tyler and Dr. Gardenour talked about some things in an email, some possible things that we could talk about, but that might be something that we could do, and again, we'll start off small. Instead of a two-day, we'll go maybe a couple hours. And then, hopefully, with the bids closing on June seventeenth for the music room, and once GRC is comfortable with everything, it would be, we will be having a call meeting to vote on that number not to exceed. We can do that maybe one morning, right before everybody heads off, whatever works best for Dr. May. Those usually, they should not take very long, but sooner we can do that, sooner they can get started. So, you'll just keep these things on your, kind of your radar, I'll keep you informed. I'll send out something about a policy workshop, and again, just let Ms. Perkins know if you want to do the webinar. Is there anything else I was, remind anybody else? I got it all, all right.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Gardenour for taking the time to answer a lot of questions before the meeting. I appreciate that.
Sure, anytime. I love that you ask.
Couldn't we combine the, maybe the workshop and the retreat?
I don't know.
Do it in two hours if you do.
No, I know that, but maybe like just look at one, like a four-hour afternoon or.
That's great.
Just a thought, it doesn't matter, either one's good with me, I know Dr. May and Phil are, and you're, obviously, you three are busy, but.
Well, if we could find a time, especially if we could incorporate, kind of eat together,